There's been a lot of attention paid to national politics and presidential races. So I'm happy to see even a lot of interest in our local politics. As you all know, that's the area where you can directly feel the impact that your elected officials have. And so, thank you for coming out and coming informed about us all. My name is Ashley Frasher. I'm running for District 2. I live in Twisq, and I'm lucky enough to live within a mile of both of my sisters and their families now. Actually, my nine-year-old niece Clover just gained an advantage to ride her bicycle from her house down the line. So it's been bustable for the last few years. Most of you may know that I was a wildland firefighter for the last seven years, most recently as a smoke jumper. But let me tell you a bit about what it took for me to get there. When I was twenty years old, I decided I wanted to become a smoke jumper. It took me two more years until I was hired by the Forest Service, and that was up the Tanasket Lander Hand Crew there. After there, I decided to go on to a hotshot crew. Those are the crews that go to the large wildland fires. So this is called the Mollex Liza Fire in 2015. You have much experience with those around here. But it's still known that you won't get hired by smoke jumpers if you don't have three to seven years of fire experience specifically on hotshot crews, because those are the crews that go to large fires and they get eighty or eight hundred to a thousand hours of overtime hours in the summer on top of their four-hour work job. So after five years of experience, I also put one year in on the Mather Hand Crew. It was nice to be located at home for that one year. After five years, I was hired by a smoke jumper base, and once you get hired, you have a six-week job interview. And that job interview is rookie training. It's emotionally, physically, and mentally very stressful to try and break you there so that you aren't, you know, on the fire line when you might put your life or your comrades' life at risk. So I have to say that I passed rookie training, and then myself and the rest of my rookie class spent the rest of that season proving that we could call ourselves smoke jumpers. And at the end of that season, I was voted Rookie of the Year by my peers. And so this is the kind of commitment and dedication and experience that I can promise you I will bring to this position as County Commissioner. I love smoke jumping. It was a fantastic job. I loved it. But I wanted to return home, and I'm taking too much time. So I wanted to return back to Twisq and become more involved in the community. And I want to highlight the fact that I'm running the county affiliation intentionally in order to represent all of the people in our county.
Thank you. Andy?
I've got a lot of time to think about it.
Good one, Andy.
I think we want to get to the stretch.
Rookie of the Boost.
Let me hand you over. I really appreciate everybody standing here. I grew up over in Monterey. I grew up on a cattle ranch. I lived on Little County Road. I actually live now in the same house that I grew up in. I've seen a lot of changes on that road. I grew up farming. I took myself through college doing that. Went to Washington State University. Got a degree in agricultural technology management, and I got a business plan. Went to work for a company that tested nuclear power sites. Lucky enough to travel all over the United States. Got to see everything from Maine to Florida, Louisiana, everything kind of in between. And nothing holds the handle to where I live now. It's beautiful. I've always compared it to everything. Couldn't find a place that I wanted to come back to more. I got offered a job and was able to move back. Very fortunate. Worked my way up through that job to being kind of a sales manager. Then moved on to managing the local hardware store. Did that for three years. And then was basically asked to please come back and manage the lumberyard, North Bend Lumber, that I manage now. I have been seven years. So I've had a lot of business experience in my life, and I think that that is going to help me be a Commissioner. I think that being, working in that lumbering street has helped me to be able to put out fires, be able to understand people's needs, be able to listen to people, and kind of engage what their needs are and what they want. I think that is going to be very helpful if I get elected as a Commissioner. So I am going to make it that brief because I like to get on with these questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Right on time. First question, Ashley. Why is the Three Devils Road a problem?
Yes, it is definitely a problem in that Chris was living here a lot. It has to deal with the communications in the lot there that would support to those citizens. But also, as a firefighter, having an ingress road is very important and having a possibility with those residents there. Maybe it hasn't been used, but that's not to say that it can't be used in the future. And I think that's the key point. And so, the biggest issue is opening clear and transparent communication and making sure that you're having these conversations with residents. But more importantly, not just having these conversations, but listening to the people and their concerns.
Thank you. Andy, same question.
I don't think it's a problem because the road goes through private property. And if I had a road like that that went through a big chunk of my property and I had people destroying my property all the time, I would probably want to get rid of those two. Now, you also have a group of people who want to use that road and feel that it's needed for ingress and egress in case of emergencies. Another important point. So we have two different ideas of why the road should be closed and why it should be open. And I think that if there was a little bit more information given and a little bit more time taken to let everybody kind of understand each side of the subject, that possibly a different decision might have been reached. I think that it is... I do not think that there was enough transparency going on to make people understand why the decision was made.
Thank you. Hey, we've heard this one here before, too. Andy. Why is the coalition of two of these residents and friends suing the county commissioners?
Because they feel that the county commissioners vacated a county road that could seriously cause problems if there was an emergency situation where they needed to get out of there. It'd probably cause disruption in their lives if they had to go twenty miles out of their way to get down to a lot. And I think that overall, if we are talking about not wanting the Forest Service to close our roads, then why would we want our county to close our roads?
Ashley, same question.
I believe the residents are suing because of that ingress egress decision or importance. But there's also a way that you can often make decisions where people fully understand why they're making that decision and feel valued and have their needs met. And you might come with a similar decision, but there would likely not be a loss. Not saying that this would be the case, because I really think that that's a valid reason to want the road open, but I believe that in a lot of instances, the tone of voice that you use when you're addressing the citizens and their concerns matters a lot. But this has really a lot to do with the address.
Thank you. Andy, why is a juvenile detention a problem?
It deals with social aspects and economic aspects at the same time. And anytime you have to deal with both of those, you're going to have a problem. You have the clear understanding that kids that are put into that system, it is important for them to get care, to get issues resolved, to have people close to them, their family, close to them in order to try to get through whatever they did to get there. And then you have the economic aspect of a detention center that is not up to code by definitions that are to a higher standard than just your regular residential codes. So now we have to come up with the thought of can we repair the facility that we have? Is it worth repairing? Do we look in the future and find that socially we're going to have more and more problems and so we need to repair the facility? And how do we pay for it? So when you try to answer all those questions at the same time, that is worth the problem.
Thank you. Ashley, same question.
So the detention center was built fifteen roughly years ago or more. It definitely needs to be upgraded. And as one of these two mentioned, there are serious issues with safety. If the kids kick the door too hard, the property will open. These are known issues. They're no problems. Now, how do we pay to either upgrade the existing facility, build a new one, whatever that next decision is? And we've already done the cost analysis that it costs more to send the kids away, but there's more than just the financial side of things. I think every community leader responded saying that it would be detrimental to the entire community if these kids were shipped away. And I think that that is in another part. It needs to be fully decided before you make the decision of moving them out of county. And thankfully, the commissioners did that. But the fact that the buildings need to be upgraded still exists. And as Chris Branch mentioned, that's where you have that long-term planning. I would like to have a roadmap for the county, some sort of five, ten, twenty-year vision to see where we plan to go and kind of keep us on course. And that way, departments can have that vision in mind when they're planning on how to fund long-term projects, upkeep, vehicles, maintenance, that sort of thing, rather than being very reactionary and making decisions from the devil.
Next question we've heard before, too. Ashley, why are the county judges against the county commissioners?
So I spoke with the judges in Rabineau, and the employee was looking, was getting an increase in pay because he was getting another job, another full-time job. He's taking the position of two full-time jobs, the administrator of the juvenile detention center. So that is one clarification I'd like to make. But I think it's an instance of the judges recognizing that there needs to be more communication between the commissioners and the departments. And they felt the need that the commissioners were overstepping a line.
Ashley?
Andy, can I answer now? An employee can't do two jobs and get paid a hundred percent of the wages of both jobs. It's absolutely impossible for a person to do a hundred percent of two different jobs. I understand some reasoning for not wanting to increase the person's pay just because they're doing two jobs. I also understand that once a budget is set for the year, I don't believe that there is line item budget. Is that true, Michelle? Is it bottom-line budgeting or line item? So anytime that anybody changes a line item, they have to come to the commissioners and ask to change that line?
Yeah.
Me go through all my back doors now?
No, no. So once the budget's set, each department or official has to come back to the commissioners to ask to get their budgets changed. So the commissioners can either deny them or accept the change. But as long as the departments are working within their budget, that's their... That is their business. So the commissioners cannot dictate how the money is used once the budgets are set. So I think that is why there was an issue with judges.
Thank you. Now we'll move on. Oh, one of those moments. Ashley, what is the problem with the county budget?
There is a lot of unthought and planned days. I heard that the county is required to do more than the state or the federal budget camps down. So that requires quite a bit of juggling. But we're involved in five different lawsuits. There is an attorney dedicated to HR management. And those large expenditures could be great if we remove ourselves from a lot of that litigation. Now, granted, the county will likely use it again. It's not these current commissioners' entire fault or everything. But I think a lot of the litigations could be resolved. They could have been avoided in the first place. And so, having that much money being tied up in court all the time, there's a lack of money for everything else that needs to happen in our county. That building of the... An upgrade of the juvenile detention center, the vehicles that many departments need, the raises that employees deserve. So let's get ourselves out of these lawsuits first.
Continually giving raises is very hard. I know that the cost of living increases. But at some point, you, as an employee, have to accept that there is a... You top out at a certain level. And I know that from running the business. There are all sorts of different positions in my business where you simply top out and can't pay me. So you can't continually keep paying and paying and paying and paying and increasing because we are on a limited income with the fact that only twenty-four percent or twenty-five percent of the property within our county is taxed to be a property tax. So the current commissioners could have taken a one percent increase for the last four years, every year, property tax increase, without going to the voters and putting it to the vote. What that would amount was anywhere from four to ten dollars a year for each person. Would have generated about fifty-three thousand dollars a year for the last four years. Is that worth it? Is that worth it to put the burden on everybody in here to try to balance a budget that keeps getting larger and larger? I don't think so. So I don't think that there's something wrong with the budget necessarily other than trying to definitely keep a finger on it, watch at all times, and knowing when the money's coming in, where it's going. Is it being used efficiently and wisely?
Thank you. Again, this is an opinion question. Why are some of the county employees upset with the county commissioners? Andy?
I think they're upset because they don't feel that there's any trust with county commissioners. I don't think that they feel that the county commissioners communicate with them on a level that is greater than "you work for us and so do this." I've talked to several people within the county that work for the county that have said, "Hey, we'd just like to see you down in our office. We'd like to know that you care about what's going on, and you care enough to come down here and talk to us." And I honestly think that it is more of a social aspect rather than an economic aspect. Because everybody knows that wages are going to be contentious no matter what. But is it going to be contentious enough to where they are disgusted with the county commissioners? I don't think so.
And I believe that the fact that the commissioners haven't heard this personally is telling. It means that either they're not listening or the county employees don't feel like they are welcome. And their input will either be heard or will be valued or this will be consequences that they speak of. So I think that that's an issue. I actually have a question.
Pardon me?
I have a question about the wording of the question.
Okay. Why are some of the county employees upset with county commissioners?
The fact that they don't feel like they can go in and have their voices heard means that their voices aren't being heard and/or properly listened to. And I've also heard that there's a lot of micromanaging. People... The commissioners really dictating how they actually operate. I think if you hire qualified, competent people, which I know that most of the county employees are, then you should feel that they have the ability to perform their job and you give them that brain to do it. And as long as they continue performing and you expect highly of them and they meet those expectations and are working within that budget, then let them do it the way they want to do it.
Thank you. Why is privatizing the EMS a problem? Ashley?
I actually don't think it's an inherent problem. In the Mather, we have Arrow Mather. And I spoke with Cindy Button about the Tanasket EMS. And she actually thought that the commissioners made the right choice to contract it out to Lifeline. I know it was an unpopular choice, but there's... If the commissioners didn't feel that they could operate an ambulance service, which of course would not fall behind too, then it makes sense to make sure that that service is being provided adequately. And I'm not saying that that wasn't the case with the volunteers. And I'm sure that they were doing it if they passed the job and could have continued to doing so. But the fact that there's a lot of discrepancy between what the commissioners knew and what the ambulance service knew is concerning when you're making that decision. So I understand that it was a hard decision. I think that maybe there could have been some more dialogue. It was over two months. It wasn't night and day. But it felt that way to some people, certainly. So I don't think it's inherently a problem. But I think that there could have been a better compromise made or some other way.
Thank you. Andy, same question.
I think that there needs to be a positive notification that there is the same service is being provided by Lifeline versus Tanasket EMS. So if the same services are being rendered, meaning the same number of people are on the ambulance crew, the same number of ambulances are out there, then you're getting an equal service. The thing I see is lack of oversight, which is, I don't know, it's good in that. I also see that a private company can dictate more to kind of what they do than what EMS service run by a county could. So I believe that in privatization, some aspects is good. I think that there just has to be good thought put into when you're going to.
Again, one year in your opinion, why is the head of the determined that was the interim director of Tanasket EMS upset with the county commissioners? Andy, you're on first.
I would assume that being upset with county commissioners is because a service got taken away that somebody cared quite a bit about and thought that they could do a better job than the incoming Lifeline service. That would be the reason that I would be upset with county commissioners for making decisions. But I do know that when you are in the position of county commissioner or manager, you do have to make hard decisions, and sometimes you can be upset. So it has to be something that you just have to understand, and hopefully, you make the right choice.
Ashley?
I'm not sure why they're upset with the county commissioners. So rather than speculate, I would like to ask them. I'd rather talk to them about that first of all.
Is there a problem with Chris remaining the original city planner?
I mean, I kind of assume that your opinion is a problem with Andy remaining the manager.
We're going to skip these last two questions.
See, I would actually like to...
Okay, sure.
There would be a problem with anybody trying to do the job of county commissioner and trying to do another full-time job. It doesn't matter what job... It doesn't matter what job you're doing, I don't care if you're changing tires or running a multimillion dollar business or being a city planner or being a firefighter. You have to dedicate your work to being a county commissioner. And what that means is if you put aside all of your other things that you're doing and that's what we've done, that's what we're doing good, put aside the things that we're doing in order to run the county. And I think if anybody else who ever runs for this position should do the same. Are you gonna end that, Ashley?
Well said.
That's the end of our program for the county folks. I want to thank everybody for being here. You're a wonderful audience. You sat there and listened to every one of these candidates. I was watching the audience and we're really into what they were saying, not just saying, "Oh boy, here we go, murder hot air from the commissioners and the senators." Great job, the audience. Great job for all of you.